Many people commented that the sky was blueed very much like September 11th on that day with that ceremony in Greenville. And as you may have noticed, we had firefighters from all over the state of South Carolina and from North Carolina who came to Greenville for this ceremony. It was very moving. And you could see in the faces, some of those sights, you might have thought what they were doing when they were kind of have a little stress there with the handkerchief out and such. It was hot and after hundreds and hundreds of steps and that heavy equipment, even some folks in real time had difficulty dealing with that. But they persevered and got back in line again too. So we thank everyone who made that possible. And again, it happened right here in Greenville as we remember that terrible day. Thank you. Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember John DeWorke, Councilmember Lillian Fleming, Councilmember Ken Gibson, Councilmember Will Brasington, Councilmember Russell Stahl, Councilmember Dorothy Dow, Mayor Knox White.
Here. The minutes of August 28th will be approved as submitted. Was there any objections? Seeing none. Thank you, Council, for the long and arduous workshop previous to this meeting. Everybody looks in pretty good shape following that. A lot of good decisions were made there too. Mr. Estridge, you're the only person who signed up to speak to us tonight. Yeah. So you got the...
Something about 50th birthday.
Absolutely.
Is it your 50th birthday party?
Yeah.
I don't think so.
I passed that milestone long ago. No. 50 for me is jail bait.
No.
Seriously, Metropolitan Arts Council turns 50 this month, and all of you should have an invitation to our birthday party on next Thursday, the 22nd, at Avenue between 6 and 9. There will be no presentations, no speeches, and no award ceremonies. Just a great party with great music and good food, and we hope you can make it. Our 50th year is also going to be our best year because we reached several milestones very recently. We received our first million dollar gift this year, and we've also had a naming opportunity that came to fruition, 250,000 to name the gallery in our facility down in the West End, and also a new endowment for emerging artists to further their careers with postgraduate studies and artists in residencies. And I just want to say, it's great to be at MAC. It's great to be in this city. It's great to have the wonderful relationship with all of you because you get how important the arts are. And I just want to say thank you very much, and I hope to see you next Thursday. Okay?
We do.
Thanks.
Thank you. We have the consent. No, we have a presentation for us. It's like we have the Juneteenth essay.
Okay. I would like to welcome tonight one of our winners of the Juneteenth essay contest, Mackenzie McDuffie, student of JL Mann High School. Mackenzie won the scholarship from the Greenville County section of the National Council of Negro Women at this year's Juneteenth celebration at Union Park. And Mackenzie is going to read this for us. She was here early, and we did not see her, and we apologize for that right now.
That's okay.
It was so good to see you, Mackenzie.
Yeah. Thank you. Good to have you with us. Yeah, we... Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Glad to have you with us tonight. Thank you.
All right. Can I start?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. "Juneteenth means independence, celebration, and freedom. Juneteenth also means shackles and whips. It means families lost and families gained. It means civil rights and nonviolent protests. When I think of Juneteenth, I think of the ancestors on the side of my family that had to endure years of torture and despair to gain freedom. On the other hand, I also think about the part of my ancestors that owned slaves and whipped them for missing a spot over there. Growing up as a bisexual female, I've had to go through trials and tribulations figuring out what side to put myself on. For years, I've been told that I have no authority to say anything about slavery just because I have a white side of the family. Just because my parents decided to get interracial married, I have to live with two different sides of me every day. Seeing how many people from so many cultures celebrate Juneteenth every year makes me feel seen and accepted. Knowing that it has become an international holiday and that every year a big food festival and parade comes out of this holiday every single year makes me feel like we're moving forward, forward in time and discrimination. Some days, I don't feel like that. When I turn on the TV and see breaking news, black man lynched for walking down the street, or breaking news, another black man killed in a police interrogation for pulling out a hairbrush, it makes me feel furious knowing that we've done, that we do move forward. It's like we take one step forward and three steps back. But even if it's one day a year, we have a day to appreciate the people that fought, a day to dedicate to the people that lost their lives fighting for others, and a day to appreciate the minute the shackles were left in the shed and the chains were broken. Disparity is a term that refers to inequality or difference between two or more things. It can be observed in various aspects of life, such as income, education, and socioeconomic status. These disparities can lead to discrimination and injustice in society. Supporting institutions like the National Council of Negro Women can help lessen discrimination in society. There will always be disparity no matter how far we get as a society or how much we try to change people's opinions. The first time I ever heard about the National Council of Negro Women, it was my seventh grade history class. We were learning about the Civil Rights Movement, and the NAACP and the NCMW were mentioned. I wondered what they both were, and I was told they were both trying to eliminate disparity amongst the African American population. Seeing that there was a group created by African Americans to support other African American women spoke volumes to me. A lot of African American women are looked over. When people think of a black person in America, it goes straight to a man. Many people don't see black women as a part of the community, including African American men. Even though they are a nonprofit organization, they are committed to their mission and lead and to lead and advocate for black women, their families and communities. Most people don't even know that the Montero COVID-19 vaccination was developed by a black woman. If it weren't for black women, we wouldn't have security, a security system, or an ironing board, or even the city of Los Angeles. All these things were made or invented by black women. People don't know that. But when people think of peanut butter, the first thing they think about George Washington Carver. The NCMW wants to advocate the opportunities and quality of life of black women. They want African American women to be appreciated and recognized for everything they do. This council works aside every other African American organization rather than against. It was founded in 1935 by Dr. Mary McLeod Bernuth, an influential educator and activist. The council wants to promote education in entrepreneurship, financial literacy, and economic stability. It also educates women about health and promotes healthcare access and promotes civic engagement and advocates for sound public policy and social justice. When people ask how the NCMW can help eliminate disparity, the NCMW answers with a strong answer of, "We help those oppressed, especially African American women." In conclusion, Juneteenth represents hope, resilience, and perseverance. It reminds us that progress can be made when we come together as one nation under God with liberty and justice for all. Juneteenth is a day of immense significance in American history. It marks the end of slavery and the beginning of a new era, era of freedom for African Americans. The celebration of Juneteenth has grown over years and is now recognized as a national holiday in many states and countries across the world.
Thank you very much.
And we personally want to thank Tara and her staff, Parks and Recreation. This is the second year that the NAACP and the National Council of Negro Women have held a contest, and she's one of the two winners, et cetera. So we're very excited for her, and we look forward to getting her information about when she's going to college. Anyway, and uh, hey, Dan. Okay. Et cetera. And we appreciate that. And if you have time, stick around. We have some food. We want to take some pictures later on, okay?
Yeah. It is a scholarship fund. We do like to find it. We'll be at a college. So that's something to follow us up on. Okay. Thank you very much. We have the consent agenda. Do I have an emotion on the consent agenda? Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye. Moving to regular agenda, New Business 15A.
An ordinance to appropriate 82,000 in the miscellaneous grants fund for the Emerald Ash Borre mitigation program.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions? Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye. 15B, first in a series of some annexations.
An ordinance to annex approximately 0.372 acre of real property and 0.389 acre of adjacent right-of-way located at Calder Street and Pendleton Street, and to provide the zoning designation of RNXC.
Move. Second.
I have a question. Is this... Oh, are you coming up? She coming up?
Okay.
Yes.
Little bite there.
Are these... Is this the lot, or is this the combination of lots, where the houses that exist at the proposed woven site are going to be relocated to? Or is that...
Yes, that's correct.
Is that right? Oh, yeah. Okay, that probably been answered.
The highway and the property, they have to be relocated here.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? That's a piece that we keep moving down the street, I guess, is the point there. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye. 15C?
An ordinance to annex approximately 0.364 acre of city-owned right-of-way on Market Point Drive.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. You want to zoom in on that one too? Okay.
Mayor members of council, this is just to clean up city-owned property, and state law requires us to do ordinance and ventilation. So we have both of those here tonight.
Okay. Clerk call the roll.
Let me just...
Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye. 15D?
An ordinance to amend Section 19-4.2 Development Bonus of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Greenville by clarifying the development bonus applicability requirements, providing a fee and lieu payment option for small mixed-use projects, and clarifying rounding requirements.
We have a motion second first.
So moved.
Motion second.
Second.
Second. Okay. Explanation?
Sure. Mayor, members of council, we, as we have been meeting with developers, we've gotten some feedback and realized we needed to go ahead and clarify some things. So this ordinance achieves three things. First, that the development bonus applies to the entire project, not just to the extra levels. We're also, for small mixed-use developments, which we want to encourage, we are providing a fee and lieu payment option. So for example, if a project is two stories, they'll have retail on the ground level, commercial on the second, and maybe they want to do residential above. In order to go to the third floor, they could pay into the Affordable Housing Fund. And then the third is just a rounding clarification so that basically the required number of affordable units, we would remove the 30-unit threshold. It's really not relevant.
Would that just apply to an extra floor, or could it be two floors?
It could be two. It could, and it's a $2.50 payment towards the bonus height.
And what kind of... How is that payment schedule arrived at?
We would look at the total square footage that they would like to go above the base level and multiply that times $2.50 to a...
But I wanted to know, we're still in that range. Okay. Okay.
Mayor Douglas, just to use easy numbers, if you had a development that was MX2 with... I want to use easy numbers. Let's just use 100 units. And they wanted to go an extra floor or two floors. They could go up to MX4, so four floors. And by adding four floors, that's driving them to 200 units. Okay? So what you were saying in the first moment of the clarification is that 20% of those full 200 would have to be affordable versus 20% of the additional 100 that came with the additional two floors?
I might ask Shannon to help me here.
Yes, that's correct. We are trying to ensure that it is applicable to the entire project, and there was confusion in the development community as to whether it's just applicable to you having to apply the bonus, I mean, the percentage of the affordable in the bonus area that you would be applying, and that is not what we intended. What we intended was that the affordable has to apply through the entire project.
Right.
So that is, that is what we're trying to do with this amendment.
Okay.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye. 15D?
An ordinance amending Chapter 16, Article 2, Division 3 of the Code of Ordnances Regarding Noise.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Sure, we want to talk about this.
From your... Yes, sir. Mayor and council, before you, your consideration are changes to the city's noise ordinance, with one exception. The ordinance was last amended in 2004, and the extended growth that the city has enjoyed in those almost 20 years, and advances in the technology for measuring noise, has provided an opportunity for the city to do a sound study that included various points within the city but really focused on the central business district, which is, as you know, where most of our noise issues arise. The proposed changes will serve to advance the goal of council in the ordinance, which is to preserve the balance between the noise of a thriving community and the peaceable enjoyment of both public and private spaces within the city. The changes are to the distance at which noise is measured to determine whether or not there's been a violation, the standards for enforcement by law enforcement, and also to establish minimum fines for violation of the ordinance. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Lee, and that fine, the minimum fine cannot be suspended in court?
That's correct.
So I'm looking at my notes and trying to remember how it was written earlier, but are noise ordinances for the entire city?
That's current one.
Correct?
That's correct.
Okay. These amendments would apply to the ordinances for the entire city, correct?
That's correct.
So the only other place I can think of of where we do have this kind of noise is in Will Brasington's backyard, because the Greenville High Red Raiders are so awesome, they get very excited at Serene Stadium. Similarly, those JL Mann Patriots are killing it too in their stadium. So the stadium noise is about the only other thing I can think of that kind of...
And I know just a little bit. How does... There's an exception within the ordinance for certain entertainment noises. The baseball field is one example of those, of one of those exceptions that is provided for in the ordinance.
High school stadiums also provided for, or no?
I have to go back and look at that specific section in the entire ordinance.
I don't think they have been historically, because Will keeps calling to complain.
I hadn't heard. That's the first I've heard, honestly.
I'm getting all frightened.
And I'm having some folks on Ben Street.
The reason I bring it up is it's not really realistic to be measuring three feet from those speakers while they're playing the music and saying, "We're shutting it down."
That's, that's what the... Yeah, right. That's what the exception, within a different section of the ordinance that's not being amended.
Okay. Maybe...
That's exceptions work.
Second reading, if we can just have a little scrutiny. I'm specifically tied to high school stadiums.
Sure. Thanks.
And wait, I got another question. Chief, how do we feel about enforcing this?
It's something that we'll just kind of work with. I think it's kind of a little permission. I think it's very important. It should all see the same way we should have it down downtown growing, small businesses, bigger, ever. Saying we got all involved and feel safe downtown, but we're not enjoying it. It's a pleasure, a loving hand. So we're looking forward to new ones, and there'll be a lot, you should know, there'll be a lot of warning, a lot of talking about this upfront, you know, so that we get people educated, you know, and do that. If there's any stop sign, just go out and be the star of activity. We use the forums, thank you, thank you, everything. We'll do the same here. We're going to have new orders, and orders change this. It's important that you got a coach ball, all of us, and all of that might be down now.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
I hadn't felt to relay this until now, but a good time for the public to hear it and maybe first get some clarity. When I get noise concerns voiced to me as a representative, they're usually just of loudness, but sometimes they're a feel, like the type of feel that rattles your house from a bass. So by presumption, without having ever operated one of these noise meters that helps at three feet or closer, presumably the type of repercussion that shakes your window and rattles your home would be detectable through that at three feet, just as elevated noise would. Does that make sense what I'm raising?
It does. And there are actually different decibel type measurements for, those are low-frequency sounds is what those are called. Our ordinance measures for DBA, which is not the noise frequency. And so the thresholds won't necessarily capture that. However, there is not a requirement in the ordinance that those low-frequency levels break a threshold decibel level. If it can be observed as being in violation of that common sense, this is too loud and it's not what should be what reasonable people of ordinary sensibilities, that's the language in the ordinance, should be able to withstand as noise in their public or in their homes, then that can be a violation of the ordinance. And that's one thing that can cause some confusion is the decibel levels that are in the ordinance. There are different levels for inside the CBD and outside the CBD and for different times. But the decibel levels are prima facia evidence of a violation, but the ordinance specifically says there does not have to be a measurement exceeding that in order for there to be a violation. And the converse is true. Yes, it is. That is not changed.
Well, thank you. That's helpful. And I guess what I would simply say is, we're doing this to be purposeful and intentional, and I love, I love the balance. Did you say the thriving community? So I just want to make sure as we step forward with this enhanced ordinance, we stand equally ready to apply that common sense factor that you might find with DBA?
DBB.
DBB? Because it's not changed in this thing that we're considering tonight, but we still need to be apply that because that's...
That's correct.
That's real disruptive.
And it still likely would violate the, or would meet the thresholds for a violation. The low-frequency window rattling is a, is a separate measurement. If it's going to violate the common sense sensibilities, it will get captured on the... And the purpose of having the decibel thresholds is to provide some objectivity. Because, you know, if you look at the language that discusses, you know, the common sense notions of what is reasonable, you know, that's can be arguable for some people, but the threshold decibel levels provide some objectivity for that.
Thank the city attorney who has made this her project since the day she came into office. It's been growing on for about two years or so, and it's been a big issue. You know, the tech, we found, we have discovered through this process involving the police department...
involving the police department, downtown merchants and retailers, restaurants, of course, the residents all over downtown. We discovered a number of things. One is we have this wonderful mix of uses downtown. It is the reason we have such successful vibrant downtown, that we have office, retail, and residential and everything else going on makes it vibrant. But that, of course, lays a, lays the foundation for some conflicts from time to time. But we have discovered through this process that our, you know, the technology has changed, for one thing, how to measure this. And the police department's been telling us for some time that they need a better, a better way to measure and a better way to deal with the issue with the officers on the street. So this is very much responsive to the police department's own suggestions over the last couple of years. And then Lee discovered in her researchs, indeed, that technology had changed in terms of measurement. And again, our downtown has changed, too. We have issues we didn't have a couple of years ago. But this is not a small matter for the dining community, the culinary community in downtown Greenville. It's not a small matter for the residents of downtown. Everybody understands the environment they're in, but we're trying to get the worst offenders. And that's what I emphasize, too, that this is one, one way we deal with it, with the better measurement. But the other way is still the old discussion we have about, you know, where are things appropriate and where they're not appropriate downtown? Where, you know, we love the music on the street, we encourage it. In fact, we create the music on the street. But where people are is important, and making sure they don't conflict with one another and that kind of thing, and we still have issues there to be resolved. So we're not over, it's not over yet. In other words, we still have some changes further to make. Good news is, I remember, you know, 20 years ago, one of the big issues was the buses, but James Kill, you're okay. You're not going to be put to jail, in jail for this. Buses were the number one complaint 20 years ago. A lot of buses are making two us noise. Now he has potential buses, quite a long, big, and I'm sure he's, but. But James is safe. He's, he's, he just liked the Greenville High Football Team is safe, too. So, but thanks for all the work that's gone into this. Clerk Calhoun.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington. Councilmember Saul.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15F.
An ordinance to appropriate $1,340,000 in the Capitol Projects Reserve in the Capitol Projects Fund for the acquisition of a parcel and improvements thereon, totaling approximately 0.154 acre of real property identified as 153D View Drive.
So moved.
Second. Motion second. Janet, you want to?
Yes, sir. This property, that's our small private trail. This property purchase allows us to have a follow-up on property against our small private trail and to preserve the existing assets there. We'll copy until, when we decide to send that out in the future. And this was a great opportunity for us to move forward with this purchase, and we're very excited that you're all are considering it this evening.
I have a question. Is, is the responsibility for maintenance and upkeep on Parks and Rec?
Yes.
You're welcome, Tara.
But it shouldn't be in bright shape.
It is, it is. It's a beautiful building.
It is in great shape. All right, Clerk Calhoun.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson. Councilmember Brazington. Councilmember Saul.
Abstain.
Councilmember Dorothy Dow.
Dorothy Dow says aye. Thank you. Apologies, and Mayor White.
Aye. All righty, so new business 16A resolution.
A resolution consenting to the annexation of approximately 0.346 acre of right-of-way owned by the City of Greenville on Market Point Drive.
So moved.
Second.
Many motions and many seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
First ayes have it. 16B.
A resolution to authorize the acquisition of a parcel of real property and improvements thereon, totaling approximately 0.154 acre identified as 153D View Drive.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
First ayes have it. One abstention. Yeah. Okay, long workshop, but short council meeting. Ms. Manager, do you have any?
I do.
Anything you want to add? Okay, thank you.
Yes. The Greenville City Fire Department opioid team consists of new requisitions for the fire department and opioid coordinator, Melton, and opioid program specialist, Clint Johnson, and a data analyst, Marley Nagelson. I'm sure I made that, I'm sure I've learned the true name. I'm very sorry. The program coordinator and specialist are tasked responding with current GCF personnel to overdose emergencies and then conducting follow-up visits with their suffering from substance use disorders. The team will work to involve individuals into our program and assist those individuals in locating appropriate treatment avenues to combat their substance use disorders, as well as to provide support services to the injured persons. The team, the fire department, and partnering agencies as needed are working to understand how to best apply the data to field operations. Currently, we are working to establish relationships and partnerships with outside organizations so that we can better understand all the resources that are available. Education is another aspect of the program, and the team will work to educate the community, GCF personnel, and businesses on the varying aspects of substance use disorders, recognition of overdoses, and appropriate management of overdoses before responders arrive. And I just wanted to have an opportunity to recognize the team tonight. They are here, and so if you would, please just welcome them to.
I think we give you a standing ovation for that, guys. Thank you.
So we really.
Thank you so much for being with us tonight. Glad to honor you.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. We wanted to recognize this program and the importance that it will provide for our community.
Shannon, just as a reminder, this was funded by a federal grant from the bipartisan infrastructure law, I think we heard about.
Through state grant.
State, oh, I thought it was, was it not federal?
It's opioid fund, but I thought it was out of the state, but I'm sorry.
Okay. It was funded by, by a higher level. Are we communicating well about this program with our school principals?
I think we just started the program, and so we haven't had that opportunity, but we obviously want to do that moving forward. I mean, this is.
I just want to make sure.
This team is put together to do a specific amount of education. And I think that we know that we have some issues within our community. I had the opportunity to hear about some things related to addiction in our community from our sheriff's office recently at one of their presentations, and I think that education at that younger age is one of the things that we're really going to try to focus on.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure the school leadership is aware of it as a help, as well as any SROs in the schools should certainly know about it.
And our neighborhood is so safe, too.
Is that all?
No, I just wanted to thank you all again for, and our communications team for putting together tonight's moving video for 9/11 and having that moment of silence. I was a planner. When that happened 20 years, 20 years ago, I was 26 years old, and I will never forget that day. It was a day of definite worry and, but also remember that we actually had a historic resources board meeting, our historic board meeting that night, and we went ahead and did about our business to move on with keeping things going. But it is the only, the only historic board meeting that I've ever been to where somebody brought in milk and cookies, and we had milk and cookies that night just to have a feeling of togetherness after such an emotional day. So thank you all very much for recognizing that tonight and our moment of silence for 9/11, and to our communications team for putting together the video from the stair climb on Saturday.
Very, very similar to my memory. All right, thank you very much. Thank you, council.
Thank you.